Good evening and welcome to this virtual special Board of Education meeting. Attending a virtual meeting may be a new experience for some, so please allow me to take a moment to review some procedures that will allow everyone to participate. All Board of Education votes will be conducted through a roll call vote. To avoid distracting background noises, please mute yourself when not speaking. The meeting will be recorded and the recording does include anything that is typed into the chat box. Pardon me a moment, someone's knocking on a door, I'm not sure which door it is, I will be right back.
I will wait then to call us to order.
Jan, I hear a lot of static, is that coming from your end?
I really hope not because I am completely and entirely alone, so. Mrs. Petke is going to try to call in too, so we'll give her just a moment and hopefully she's able to call in.
I am back, that was Mr. Scheller, he just arrived in the boardroom, so if you can give him just a moment to get logged on to his Chromebook, then he will be ready.
Absolutely, and Mrs. Petke is also going to be phoning in because she's having some issues, so we'll give it a moment here so that she can get on as well. Is it Mr. Scheller? Oh, there, I believe Mrs. Petke is now on, is that correct?
Yes, I can hear you.
Beautiful, alright, we will come to order then, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is ours. Alright, Mrs. Petke, if you could call and roll please.
Mr. Seeger?
Here.
Mr. Forbes?
Here.
Mr. Holman?
Here.
Mrs. Petke here, Mr. Scheller. Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mrs. Johnson?
I am here as well, thank you. Dr. Appel, can you verify publication of meeting?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Consent agenda, would any member like any item moved from the consent agenda to be dealt with separately? Alright, we will then vote by general consent. And hearing no dissent, the consent agenda carries. Unfinished business, item A, consider approval of updated 2021 spring events proposal.
If you should have any questions, Mr. Wolfgram is on this evening and the class has finalized their plans. There were a couple of options earlier on and they've now decided on their venue.
A question for Dan, I guess. I know Jacob asked me, he was wondering if Tim and Makela would be invited to crown the next couple? Or if not?
I don't have an answer for you, but I can get back to you on that. I know that right now we are not allowing additional graduates to return, so with that blanket statement, I would say no. Because we're trying to keep it cohort to just our student body.
Alright, I'll just check into it, he asked, so I thought I'd ask.
Yep. But the way memo is constructed, we're not allowing guests or graduates to be attendees at the prom. So my answer to that would be no.
Alright. Thank you. And I guess, along with them asking questions, one more for you, Dan. Going forward, is it going to be a senior prom in the future or is it going to go back to a junior prom?
Moving forward, the concept is to be a senior prom, so that way everybody has an opportunity and it's front-loading, but most of the schools that I've talked to, both in the CWC, moving forward, that is their plan as well, so that way it doesn't skip a class. And with this event, we're trying to incorporate a little bit of homecoming activities leading up to it as well. So it's kind of a homecoming slash event. So we're trying to get the kids opportunities to be able to do some things leading up.
Alright. You know, my thinking, I was like, you know, a senior prom is like, you're within like three weeks of, four weeks of graduations, like it becomes kind of a, you know, you're kind of moving on at that point. First of all, I think a junior prom is better, but I understand what you're doing, you don't want to skip a class, so.
Right, we'd certainly entertain any suggestions you would have to fix that.
Yeah. Double up in a different year, when everything is kind of calm.
I think we can certainly revisit it, but the prevailing wisdom that we're going with now is a senior event. I certainly understand your concern.
Alright, thank you.
And also kind of on a side note to that, Wisconsin is really kind of unique in actually having junior proms and I think it's more common in rural areas as well because in most other states, it is a senior prom and it always has been that way. So I know traditionally in Wisconsin, it's a junior prom, but that is, that is unique to Wisconsin or perhaps to the Midwest.
For me, like I say, it's just, you get to be a senior and it's like just about the graduation, you get jobs, you're kind of a little closer to moving on, that's where the junior prom kind of fits because you're a little more relaxed, you know, you don't got a lot of things going on as much anyway. So that's where I was just kind of going with my thinking, that's all. So. Got that off my chest, now I feel better.
Do you don't have any other questions looking for a motion?
This is Mrs. Petke, and this is the manual Board of Education that approved the updated 2021 spring events proposal as presented.
I have a motion by Mrs. Petke, do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Scheller?
Alright, second by Mr. Scheller, any discussion?
Yeah, I would like to consider possibly allowing seniors to maybe have somebody come in from, you know, a boyfriend or girlfriend, because I think it would be, I mean, this is, this is it for them and it'd be pretty minimal for just the senior class only.
Well, being that there are
Thoughts are on that.
Being that there are 29 seniors and potentially you're talking, you could theoretically, I mean, I'm sure we wouldn't, but you could theoretically have 29 students from theoretically 29 different schools. I would guess you're probably talking 10 different schools. If we were to have some sort of an exposure at prom, that is an impact to every single one of those schools and that impact could be anything from canceling sporting events and canceling senior banquet's.
Yeah, we've all been we've locked down for different sporting stuff, I mean, I don't know, I feel pretty strongly about it. It's your senior year, this is it, they didn't have their junior prom last year. You know, I get now, this year, I mean, we're moving stuff around to make it happen, but it's, I'm guessing there's probably going to be a handful of kids that don't even go because of that. But, you know, I don't know, everybody keeps talking about as much normalcy as possible, well, I think you're just, we keep, I don't know, we keep taking advantage of all the small stuff too, the little things, but.
But the problem comes down to contract tracing, excuse me, contact tracing. So while I totally get it, you know, kids go and they hang out with their boyfriend or girlfriend and they might be from a different school district, it's real simplistic to say, hey, Jimmy found out that he had COVID and he was over at my house, so now we know that our family has to quarantine and in the process, I was around my best friend Kim and she has to quarantine too versus hundreds of kids. And now we're impacting multiple school districts and if you don't catch something right away, what's the ripple effect to those districts as well besides our district? Our district, I would imagine the recommendation would be a two-week virtual, unless we're going to have video that we can contact trace by estimating who was around whom at the time. And when you're talking about other school districts, that spreads to them and potentially could impact a kid's last golf game or a kid's last baseball game or they don't get to attend their senior banquet or depending on when that district is hosting graduation. That was the rationale behind that.
There's a lot of what-ifs and what could happen and stuff like that and I guess, I just don't agree with it. So if everybody else agrees with it, then I can't really do anything about it, so that's fine.
Well, the student representative, this is Mr. Holman. We had in our last meeting, said there would only be like six students involved, which is a small number and I guess we don't know that for sure. But if everybody is wearing masks, masks are supposed to be the magic to stop all COVID, so that's something to take into account also.
The contact tracing is still for remaining six feet apart. If you're not able to stay six feet apart for 15 minutes. So anyone attending the prom, it would impact the whole group and that's with or without masks. So in terms of the contact tracing, they haven't changed any of the guidance on that. Both the state and the county VHS do not recommend bringing guests in. And we did an informal poll and we're not aware of any districts in the area right now that are bringing in, allowing anyone outside the district to come in, so.
Well, yeah, I guess and potentially by having prom, you could, I mean, we could be shut down for two weeks also. So I don't, I don't really see what the difference is, we're going to have all those kids, all our kids there regardless. So you're going to have 50, 60 kids, whatever, so it all goes the same, I mean, I don't know.
It is the same from that perspective because those students are together every day. So if we had an exposure at the high school tomorrow, it would impact the whole high school building, you are correct about that.
Yeah, and typically those boyfriends slash girlfriends are together multiple nights a week too, so I mean, it's, it's pretty much the same, I don't, I'll quit, I'll quit arguing about it now, but. Contact tracing, was it, did it reduce to three feet for something?
Not for contact tracing.
Was that for the classes or something?
When students are wearing a mask in a classroom, they can be three feet apart. But it's still recommended that the adults stay six feet from other adults and the adults stay six feet away from students. But the students can be three feet away from each other as long as they have their masks on.
Is there any further discussion?
Are we voting on like the graduation and all that stuff too, or is that a separate line? I think that's all together, correct?
Correct. That would be the update, so the updates would be the items that are in red on the memo and anything else was what we've already voted on.
So as, so as far as the, for the graduation, if it rains, we're just going to do it the fall, or the next day, looks like?
That's, that's correct, we're planning for a rain date.
Okay.
We hope we don't have a soggy weekend.
And this will be similar to what you put in for last year, kind of? I don't see any numbers of people on this at all.
That's correct. We're looking at spacing everybody out for the CDC guidelines and we're looking at eating families in pods with social distancing, graduates with social distancing. So it is very similar to last year's proposal. Reduced capacity crowd and our hope is to be able to, with the new wifi out there, be able to livestream the event as well.
So we, so we don't actually truly have a number written down like four people or five people or whatever from like last year? As of right now, I don't see anything.
As of right now, we don't, but my, my planning going forward is for two guests per graduate.
On the football field?
We'd be looking at having the graduates again on the track and the patrons or the families in the stands. Band and choir would be looking to be socially distanced and play as well at the event with a stage set up on the track.
Okay, I think last year you had it set up for four people and then they were going to be actually on the field, correct?
No, I think
Four people per family?
We had, we had planned for them to be in the stands and on the track, that didn't change. But I can come back to the board with the specifics regarding the mitigation plans as it says, the actual date.
Right, and we're doing, we're doing this senior recognition thing in the commons with two people, two guests per, per senior, then why, why wouldn't we have the graduation inside then if we're having two guests per, per person? It really, it's the same number other than the band or maybe move it to the gym where you have a little bit more room.
We don't have the capability to do four people for an inside event in the commons and we'd like to be able to see our new facilities as far as the stage and all of, all of the new upgrades that, we'd like to be able to use our new space. And we typically don't have the entire senior class attend the senior recognition night, so the numbers would actually be smaller.
Right, but I mean, we should have enough room in the gym for the seniors, shouldn't we? For a graduation, the seniors and two guests?
The recommendations, as I understand them from the CDC for large gatherings, anything larger than what we're looking for a recognition night are recommended to be in an outdoor, open-air event. So that was the prevailing wisdom that was guiding our thinking.
You want to know like two or four, or you're hoping for four? Well, Dan, you hoping for two guests or a couple up here?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Mr. Scheller?
Well, you've been saying two out there, last year you were going with four guests with the graduate. Are you going to, you're trying to shrink it down to two this year?
I think I want to be able to take a look at the specific listening capabilities again. Last year was a little bit smaller of a class, but I'll come back with a full mitigation plan with those specific numbers for the April board meeting.
I know a couple of different ideas, I know, last year we had all the kids were out on the football field and the adults were up in the stands. Winnetka, when I, over there, they had four people and the students, all, they were all on the football field and then like everything else was up on the track and we kind of did the other way, kind of flip-flopped it.
I think all of all of those possibilities are going to be up for consideration, so I don't want the board to get the feeling at this time that those things will not be considered. We will certainly look to try to make the best opportunity for our students to have as many people as, as is possible per the CDC guidelines. So please don't misunderstand any numbers because those haven't been presented yet. We will certainly explore possibilities of maximizing the potential for our families to be there. If that, if that means it needs to be vice versa, I did speak with Dr. Appel about that the other day, that the graduates are in the stands and, and the patrons are on the field or if we were to social distance even larger and bring your own lawn chair out on the field, I think all of those things are options for us to consider. So please don't think that they're ruled out.
Thank you. Can we remove the graduation thing from the motion then? Until we agree on a number?
So this previously was voted on, this is not, that part is not changed. The only items that were changed in this, so you've already voted yes on this. The only thing that is different is the items that are now listed in red.
But they're all free together, so.
Right, because what you're voting on is the changes. So if we took no action on this whatsoever, that part of the graduation, already passed. It's already been board approved and that happened at our last meeting.
I'm, I'm, I guess that there were numbers and I was just thinking four from last year because that was what was last year, so.
Yeah, and Mr. Wolfgram indicates here that the full mitigation plan will be submitted closer to the actual date, so. This is
So this will be, this will be brought up again then, yeah.
Yeah. You, Mr. Wolfgram, you were anticipating at the regular April 20th meeting, you have all the details for graduation?
Yes, that's my plan.
Okay, do we have any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, Mr. Seeger?
Nah.
Mr. Holman?
Hi.
Mr. Forbes?
Hi.
Mrs. Petke?
Hi.
Mr. Scheller?
Yeah.
Mr. Johnson?
Hi.
And it is an eye for Mrs. Johnson as well, motion carries with Seeger voting name. Alright, new business, item A, consider approval of revised full year 2021, 22 staff and program change proposal.
And Mrs. O'Brien is on this evening, if you would like her to review. She has gone back through the forecasting model with some updated information and that would include information related to cost savings for health insurance or a zero cost increase that you'll be discussing a bit later. Do you have any questions for her?
I guess I have one question, so reducing secondary teacher reduction, what area are we talking about? Can't talk about people, but you can talk about areas, can't you?
Um, yes, we, robotics and hearing teacher has resigned and we have another teacher who's requested a transfer into that position. And then we're using attrition not to fill the position. So as we've got smaller class sizes moving up from the elementary into the middle and high school and we're graduating some of those bigger class sizes, now we're starting to see the impact of resizing the middle and high school. We kind of say at the elementary, we're a two-section district. So now you're seeing kind of the resizing to what that means in the middle and high school. You can't really say it's two sections, but for example, next year, the whole sixth grade class right now is only 30 students, as an example. So that changes what you need in terms of, you know, how to staff for various classes and so forth.
So in three years, when the third grade was at 60, basically 60 kids, then it's going to be a struggle? Do they, are they, will they have to add staff then?
Not necessarily, right now we're staffed to do two sections of everything and we, we still are staffed. We sized down to two sections. So we're still in some regards over staff at that building, but we're working gradually toward the resizing.
Please, would be looking for a motion?
Mr. Scheller, I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised full year 2021, 2022 staff and program change proposal as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Scheller, do I have a second?
Russ, done, isn't that second?
Second by Mr. Johnson, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Seeger?
Hi.
Mr. Holman?
Hi.
Mr. Forbes?
Hi.
Mrs. Petke?
Hi.
Mr. Scheller?
Hi.
Mr. Johnson?
Hi.
And it is an eye for Mrs. Johnson, so motion carries. Item B, consider approval of revised district-wide school reopening protocols.
Mrs. Petke, I need that the manual Board of Education is pleased to revise district-wide school reopening protocol, they've issued a convention.
I was not able to understand what Mrs. Petke said.
Nor could I.
Sorry. I'm trying to do it through the phone and look at it at the same time. So I need that the manual Board of Education approve, the revised, excuse me. I'm down, I'm the one. Try this again. Move that the manual Board of Education approves the revised district-wide school reopening protocol, they've issued a convention.
Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. Petke, do I have a second?
Russ Johnson, I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Johnson, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Seeger? Hearing none, Mr. Seeger. I did, I didn't catch your response, Mr. Seeger.
He's muted.
He's unmuted for a moment, but no, he's, gotta read the flyer, Luke. I said, uh, hi.
Thank you.
I heard, I keep cutting out, something's going on.
Yeah, yeah, we're having some, some issues here. Mr. Holman?
Hi.
Mr. Forbes?
Hi.
Mrs. Petke?
Hi.
Mr. Scheller?
Hi.
Mr. Johnson?
Hi.
And it is an eye for Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries. Item C, consider approval of spring sports COVID-19 recommendations.
Russ Johnson, I move that the manual board of education approve, approve the spring sports COVID-19 recommendations as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Mrs. Petke, second.
Second by Mrs. Petke. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Seeger. We're not catching it. You're unmuted, but.
You asking me again?
Yep.
Yeah, I guess I, I am not even hearing half of the stuff. Yeah, I.
Mr. Holman?
Hi.
Mr. Forbes?
Hi.
Mrs. Petke?
Hi.
Mr. Scheller?
Hi.
Mr. Johnson?
Hi.
And it is an eye for Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries. Item D, consider approval of updated fundraiser spreadsheet.
Dan Forbes, I move that the manual board of education approve the updated school year 2020, 2021 fundraiser spreadsheet as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Forbes. Do I have a second?
Russ Holman, I second it.
Second by Mr. Holman. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Seeger.
Didn't, they just didn't. That they weren't gonna no longer do, they didn't have good luck with it, or just? Does anybody know?
You, you're not hearing us.
Which activity were you asking about?
I was just asking about those ones in red that they weren't gonna continue with, like the band and the chorus ones and stuff. Was that just because they just didn't, they didn't need it? Or they didn't, it didn't work out well for them, or?
Mr. Wolfgram?
I guess concessions, one you can't do, so.
Right, the answer to that is yes and yes. As that, they, they, they didn't happen due to COVID. There was not a, an aggressive stance for a lot of our clubs and activities for fundraising this year. We will bring this fundraising fee and fundraiser sheet back. Dr. Opera, I believe it's in June for June or July for the following year. So that way, we have plans moving forward for next year.
Okay. I just want to make sure that, you know, they're, they're still trying to move forward, like they're going on trips and things like that, not, not canceling the stuff so they don't have money for it, you know, when all, you know, simmers down a little bit more.
Right, the ones in red just basically didn't happen. So I wanted to make sure the board understood that they, that they didn't. We're certainly monitoring, looking forward to the opportunities that we can travel again when it's appropriate.
Okay.
And actually, what prompted this to come before you was a change in the elementary. Due to COVID, they couldn't do the book fair that they normally would do in the spring of the year, which is very popular. So, Mrs. Krieger was going to do a meet-a-thon activity instead to make sure there was a fundraiser just of a different sort that would work a little bit better presently.
Okay.
All right, so Mr. Seeger, it's your vote then.
Hi.
Mr. Holman?
Hi.
Mr. Forbes?
Hi.
Mrs. Petke?
Hi.
Mr. Scheller?
Hi.
Mr. Johnson?
Hi.
And it is an eye for Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries, roll call vote. Item E, consider approval of WCA as a school district of Manawa Health Insurance Provider for fiscal year 2021, 2022.
And Mrs. O'Brien is, is again on in case you would have any insurance-related questions for her.
Couldn't you just kind of run us through, run us, run it through for us?
So, Dr. Opera and I met with our consortium last Friday. And as I kind of went through in the rationale there, the group anthem, we had a, we a agreement with Anthem would come back as a second year and that we would have a cap on our second year of a nine-point increase. So the anthem initially came back with an eight-point-five percent increase. When M3, our insurance, for our experiences, you know, so that they could do a calculation, they thought that our rate should go down by three-point-four percent. So that prompted M3 then to go out to bid. We went out to bid with our consortium and we had three companies that came back to the bids. When we did that, Anthem lowered their, their increase down to five percent. But WCA, which is the insurance company that we had, not this past year, but the years before, came back and they kind of want us back. And so they would give us a zero percent increase. And then WE said that they would give us a thirteen-point-five percent increase. So the consortium agreed that WCA, we were happy with them before and we would like to go back to them.
The big thing too was that second year rate cap. Anthem wasn't willing to cap the rate for the year after next. And WCA was willing to do that. So we were concerned, not only did Anthem have a five percent increase, even though we still thought that was a bit unfair given our experience. We were worried that that increase the following year could be excessive.
So the zero percent from the WCA was, it didn't change any of the deductibles or anything like that, just?
No, it's the exact same policy. Everything remains exactly the same.
Oh, nice.
I think the only thing that Mary said, and I don't think it affects people in our area, was that the dean provider is not included in WCA. But I don't think dean in our part of the state is a major player for most of our participants. But she was even going to see if they could make some adjustment for some of the people in the southern part of the state that are in consortium.
All right, so we'd be looking for a motion.
Russ Holman, I move that the Manawa Board of Education approve WCA as a school district of Manawa Health Insurance Provider for the fiscal year 2021, 2022 as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Holman. Do I have a second?
Luke Seeger, I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Seeger. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Seeger.
Hi.
Mr. Holman?
Hi.
Mr. Forbes?
Hi.
Mrs. Petke?
Hi.
Mr. Scheller?
Hi.
Mr. Johnson?
Hi.
And it is an eye for Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries. Next meeting dates, April eighth, the Board of Cameriers meets at 10:00 AM at Board Room. April twelfth is Finance Committee at 6:00 PM virtually. Twelfth is Billings and Rounds, seven virtually. April fourteenth is Regular Moment, five virtually. Fourteenth is Policy and Human Resources at six virtually. And our regular Board of Education meeting is April twenty-sixth, seven PM virtually. I am looking for a motion to adjourn please.
Do you have to get somebody to volunteer to, for the Board of Cameriers, or no? No, I can't, but.
Mrs. O'Brien was working on that a week ago and I can check for you tomorrow. I, I think she has folks lined up, but I, I do not know exactly who she made arrangements with. But we were tossing around some names of experienced individuals that, that would be good if not. Such as bringing Mrs. Frazier back since she had done it for so many years, but.
Yes. That's perfect, yes. All right. Russ Scheller, I make a motion during the meeting?
All right, do I have a second?
Dan Forbes, second?
Second by Mr. Forbes. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Seeger.
Hi.
Mr. Holman?
Hi.
Mr. Forbes?
Hi.
Mrs. Petke?
Hi.
Mr. Scheller?
Hi.
Mr. Johnson?
Hi.
And it is an eye for Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries by roll call vote, meeting adjourned, six forty-one PM. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.